Check, check, one, two, three, four. Sound check, one, two, three, four. Sound check, one, two, three, four. Sound check, one, two, three, four. Check, check, one, two, three, four. Sound check, one, two, three, four. Check, check, one, two, three, four.
I think we're just in a very kind of weird state. I think now we should be better. We might want to try switching between these rooms a couple times.
Okay, let's get it out.
I just know that if it's a useless table...
Click window processor. We see that switch. Let me look at this, this shows... So this shows...
Robert, do you see any for this table anymore? Since we don't... Okay, that's what I was thinking.
It looks like it's switched currently.
Maybe next time? Get rid of it. If you can use it somewhere else. And I'll ask John too, if he has some recommendations. But we've got this new sound system, I don't see that we need it.
Well, when we originally... I didn't work with these tables, by the way.
Well, so we're in the small room.
Oh, that, so I just talked in the big room. So that's fine if it works both ways.
Check, check, sound check, one, two. This is small boardroom, sound check.
It's back first.
It was interesting. Oh, God, no.
I think because there was enough else on that. I honestly just glanced where we were at, I didn't look at all the others.
Or did they have some of those? No, they didn't have those.
Check, check, one, two, three, four. Sound check, one, two, three, four. Check, check, one, two, three, four.
I think we're just in a very kind of weird state. I think now we should be better. We might want to try switching between these rooms a couple times.
Okay, let's get it out.
I just know that if it's a useless table...
Click window processor. We see that switch. Let me look at this, this shows... So this shows...
Robert, do you see any for this table anymore? Since we don't... Okay, that's what I was thinking.
It looks like it's switched currently.
Maybe next time? Get rid of it. If you can use it somewhere else.
And I'll ask John too, if he has some recommendations. But we've got this new sound system, I don't see that we need it.
Well, when we originally... I didn't work with these tables, by the way.
Well, so we're in the small room.
Oh, that, so I just talked in the big room. So that's fine if it works both ways.
Check, check, sound check, one, two. This is small boardroom, sound check.
It's back first. I think we're just in a very kind of weird state. I think now we should be better. We might want to try switching between these rooms a couple times.
Okay, let's get it out.
I just know that if it's a useless table...
Click window processor. We see that switch. Let me look at this, this shows... So this shows...
Robert, do you see any for this table anymore? Since we don't... Okay, that's what I was thinking.
It looks like it's switched currently.
Maybe next time? Get rid of it.
We got them. Okay. Well, welcome. This is the Jordan School District Board of Education meeting. Today is Tuesday, March 29th, 2022. We are in the J A T C South Building. And we have with us board members Daryl Robinson, Jen Atwood, Marilyn Richards, Tracy Miller, Bryce Dunford, and Matt Young, along with our superintendent, business administrator, and various members of our staff here. Thank you and welcome. We would like to excuse Nikki George from this meeting. She may be joining us electronically a little bit later on. And then we'd also like to excuse Mike Anderson, our associate superintendent. And I just want to make note that all of our board members and staff make board meeting a priority and schedule around it. And this is a particular board meeting in which we changed it on them. And we did change our meetings this month to accommodate the political caucuses after things had already been scheduled. And so we hate to do that and hopefully won't ever have to do that in the future. But we do want to excuse those two from being with us tonight. We have a very full agenda. The first four items on our study session are all things that we're going to vote on in our general meetings. So my goal is to get through all those before our general meeting starts.
Good.
If it looks like we're getting too hung up on one of them, I'll take a motion from one of you to move on and we'll do it next month. But we'll see how it goes. We do need to vote on fees today, though, so that is one, and summer projects. So those are two we can't put off until next month. So we will start with a review of our calendar survey. And we have Mr. Hamblin and Mr. Olton with us to present those results.
Thank you. We're glad to be here to present the calendar results. And I'll turn the time over to Caleb.
All right. Thank you. We are here with results of the calendar survey, which we've conducted over the past week or 10 days or so. As a reminder to the board, we brought two options to you at the beginning of March. Option A had a start later in the month of August, had a shorter winter recess and a spring recess at the end of March. Option B had a start earlier in the month of August, a longer winter recess and a spring recess in April. On the survey, we had 8,419 responses since the start of recorded history, which began three years ago when I started in this position. That is the second highest number of responses we've had on a calendar survey. So we were quite pleased with those responses. As is typical, most of those responses came from parents, with teachers being the second group down. The distribution is about the same as it's been on all the other surveys, the majority coming from elementary patrons and employees, followed by middle school, then high school, then special schools and district administrators. We had 1,153 comments, which have been provided to the board on Board Docs. I have read through all of them. There are some interesting comments always expressed by our community, and we appreciate their exuberance when they respond to the survey. Traditionally, we have given the board some representative comments on each of these surveys. I can just give you a spoiler and tell you the representative comments from every calendar survey. Breaks are too short, breaks are too long, we start too early, we start too late. To try and give more relevant information to the board, we took the 1,153 comments. I put all of the text into a website and it counted the most frequently occurring words. I then went through that list and got rid of all the grammar and parts of speech and things, and pulled out the top 100 words that seemed to be the most related to the calendar and put those here in this word cloud, with the larger word being the word that appeared most often. So that kind of gives you a sense.
Eclipse on there.
Eclipse is.
It is.
Right there in the middle.
Mostly because that was my comment.
No.
I wrote it 10 times.
There may have been a business administrator who also commented on the eclipse, but I've been asked not to say anything about that.
We're going together.
All the business administrators in our district appreciate that anonymity.
Thank you. I also was quite happy in doing this analysis to see that the word nightmare occurred only one more time than the word happy, which did not make the cut of the top 100, but it only appeared five times in comments. So that was a vote of confidence for me as I read those responses. So again, option A, later August start, shorter winter recess, March-spring recess. Option B, an earlier August, longer winter recess, and an April-spring recess. The breakdown for all of the results for option A is, as shown, by far the most respondents voted it as a four out of a one-to-four scale, average score of 3.06, with 69.5% of respondents giving it a three or a four. There's a breakdown by each of the groups. If the board, members of the board accessed this presentation in Board Docs prior to about 3 o'clock, there was a calculation mistake that our survey platform made, and I have corrected that in this version, which is now available to the board in Board Docs. The totals were not quite accurate, but it doesn't change the fact that option A still had a lot of fourth, four-star votes. Option B, a much more even distribution by all respondents, average score of 2.62, with 52.2% of respondents giving it a three or a four. So by far, the preference was for option A. Now, before we make a recommendation, and there again are the breakdowns for option B provided for the board, and you can review those in Board Docs. The board and community members may have noticed that in February on both options, we had parent-teacher conferences scheduled on February 14th, because the calendar committee calendars things as we traditionally do them, and we try to not deviate too far from what has been done in the past. So we would, I would like to propose in the recommendation that we reflect that conference night on the calendar as being on Tuesday and Thursday. This would be for secondary schools. But in the recommendation that I would like to make to the board off of the survey, it would be that we move forward with option A with direction to district administration to make an adjustment to secondary spring conferences as they feel most appropriate. So that would be the recommendation I have for you tonight. And we are open to any other questions or comments from members of the board.
Are you starting to see patterns? We've done this long enough that, are you starting to see patterns emerge over the years? What's the most striking pattern you've noticed?
The most striking thing, if I'm being honest, is I think we're getting to a point where, and you may have noticed this with the two calendar options, there's not a whole lot of difference between the options.
Right.
With some of the things that are part of the culture of the district and some of the negotiated items, the calendar just doesn't change that much. From a patron perspective, there are, every year, a significant number of individuals who, who want things done to the calendar that state law and those negotiated items just don't allow to have happen. So I think we are getting to a point where the options may be pretty similar from one year to the next, and we will just continue to do our best to communicate to our public why the calendar is structured the way that it is.
I don't find it coincidental that in the last two years, your proposed option A was dramatically more popular than any other. And what I read into that is that the calendaring committee is anticipating one of the most popular choices, and that's always option A. And we're verifying that almost every single year.
That's.
Do you agree with that assessment?
That's an interesting statement. I know if that is happening, it's not intentional. I know.
You put your best one forward as A? Or do you just randomize these?
We don't randomize them, but what we did this year was, when we met, we put on the board, in response to some, some patron comments that we, in the previous year, gave a good option and a bad option to steer votes, we, we put on the board, in one option, we could do this, so what would be something different that we could do with that same subject? So if, if we have a late August start, then it would make sense that we have an early August start. And we tried to not balance, but make two options that were different. And it, the one that is in option A this year just happened to be the one we did first. I don't think there was any intent to create a, a good or a better, but to create two viable options was what we, we strove for it. It would be interesting, and we, we can, with Qualtrics, I believe, put a survey out that, that randomly presents the two options, so that patrons don't get them in any particular order, but the, the scores are still tabulated the same way. I do think what is a little more common is that, that patrons tend to steer more towards the options that have longer breaks or a later August start, which we can't always do both.
Okay, so the recommendation is to go with A with the modification of moving the one parent, parent-teacher conference from the 14th to the 13th.
I should also note, President Miller, that we did a patron preference survey about three years ago, and we will be looking to potentially do one of those again next school year, wanted some distance from the COVID-related calendar changes before we went back for a preference survey.
Thank you.
Well, it seems to me that the big difference between the calendars is, does spring break need to be around Easter?
And how long winter recess is?
A lot of people that I talk to, of course, I talk to only people that like the eclipse, seem to like A but would like to kind of move spring break down. So it's the middle of the quarter instead of the first, the third, fourth quarter. Is that a possibility?
Well, all things are possible to those that believe, Mr. Robinson. There were a decent number of comments that made that same suggestion. Why can't we have option A with option B, spring recess?
Might be my family, but I'm not sure.
Probably.
They all seem to come from a business administrator account. I'm not sure what that means. It is something that if the board were interested, I could look at. There is the potential for a little bit of disruption, because on option A, spring recess includes the grade transmittal day, so it wouldn't be a clean shift. But there might be a little bit more wiggle that needed to happen.
With the option of maybe the administration deciding to change that parent-teacher conference day, would that change the vote at all, do you think? Or would it have any bearing on the, the way that the community went?
The Valentine's Day item was not mentioned very much in, in comments. I don't know if that's because our spring conferences tend to be less well-attended than the fall conferences.
Especially secondary.
Or if people just assumed that we wouldn't hold parent-teacher conferences on Valentine's Day.
And additionally, a few years ago, you may recall, we had that very issue. And so we just adjusted to another day. It was.
Tuesday, Thursday again.
Two or three years ago.
Yeah.
So is everyone ready to move forward with A, with the Valentine's Day change? Or do you want to send it back to study the spring break issue?
I would have preferred that if we were going to study the spring break, then that would have been done before we sent out the survey. So at this point, I'm, I'm fine with moving forward with option A.
I agree. Everyone but Mr. Robinson.
I just think the eclipse only comes around every little while. We ought to make it possible for people to go. I think you're going to have a high attendance miss. Right now, people aren't thinking about that, but as it gets closer and there's more excitement that generates towards that, that will be an issue. So that's the only. For me, it doesn't matter. I'll have one daughter left, she'll be a senior, it's her senior trip anyways. But I just think, like, right now, we're not thinking about that, but as it gets closer, I think it will. It is a total eclipse. If it was a partial eclipse, maybe not as important, but. And there is a professional development day that week, not a grade transmittal day, but there is a, it'd only be moving those four yellow days down. I actually, even without the eclipse, would rather have the spring break later in the semin, in the semester.
I knew that was coming. That's good.
That's always, that's, that's a bigger debate anyways, really, is, you know, because it makes it a long fourth quarter having it the first week of the quarter.
Okay, are you guys ready to go forward with, and vote?
I am.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Miller.
For all those people that love the sun, I was trying.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate your, your work and efforts on this. Thank you to all of the community who took the survey. Just so that you know, Ms. George did take the time to go through the agenda and sent me some comments on some things, and she was happy with A as long as the Valentine's Day thing got switched, for the record. Okay, B is discussion on updates to new administrative policy, DP 381 Employee Code of Ethics. And we have talked about this in the past, and it is on our, our business meeting for a vote, and I think there's just a couple minor changes. Ms. Richards?
Yes, that's right. We made just a couple easy fixes on that first paragraph on both of the copies that you see, just the words "policy provisions," so that it's in line with all the rest of our policies. Also, there are two different number 13s on letter, I mean, on number three. So there's a, the 13 on the first one says, "Thank you gifts and recognitions to employees are acceptable regardless of the value and no reciprocation is expected or perceived." On the second one, you'll notice that it says, let me get back to it, sorry. You'll notice that it says, "Thank you gifts and recognition of reasonable value." So that's the only different, and difference. And, you know, we need to have some input on those two, so that if, if and when we're ready for the other meeting, we can go ahead and vote. Do you have anything to say, Mr. Larson?
So it's reasonable value or regardless of value?
Correct. And if you remember, we talked about that last time. Those were both brought up.
Board members, anyone have an initial thought on whether it should be reasonable or regardless of?
I have a preference of number two, and that is the-
Reasonable.
Reasonable.
So, the only thing that comes to mind is, is I think there was a car dealership, I don't know if they still do this, that gives a car to whoever they recognize as the teacher of the year for the state of Utah. And I don't know if that's still happening, or if that was way back in my brain, but is that reasonable?
Yeah, for a car.
Okay, anyone else? We have one vote for reasonable.
I think I would tend to go with the reasonable as well.
I think reasonable allows you to have a discussion with the employee.
Right, right.
So if they're getting that new car, because they gave a kid an A, then you can explain to them that might cause problems with the rest of the faculty.
Seems like reasonable is the preferred one. So we'll bring that one forward then in the business meeting for the vote. Okay, thank you. All right, next we have our summer 2022 project review. We have our summer project process that we do the summer before. So last August, we selected projects. They went through the design phase, they went out to bid. We have the bids back, and we'll be voting on those in our business meeting, but did need to review that process and where we're at with the budget. So, Mr. Dunford, we will turn the time to you.
Uh, they, all bids have come back, and they were a little higher than, some were a little higher than we expected, not as bad as Facilities Committee was worried. So we have submitted them to you on Board Docs. There is no reason to hide or veil these totals. They've been bid out, and if anything isn't chosen, it's public record at this point. So you're free to speak about any of these. We recognize that the overall, I just want to remind the board that we were given from Finance Committee a recommended budget of $15 million, and with the additional prices that we kind of anticipated coming back, right now, that stands at 15.655 million. That is in excess of $655,000 over Finance Committee's recommended budget. Facilities Committee met, we have talked over the amounts, we looked at possible options to lower that, and it is our united recommendation, all three of us, that we move forward with all of these projects. Given the fact that Ms. George is not here, we would ask the following: that A, we, that three result, one of three results come out of this discussion. A, this board approves all of the projects and we move forward with them. Another option could be, we're not going, we're going to table this whole discussion until Ms. George returns. Or our preferred one is if you don't want to approve all of the projects, that we approve the ones that you're confident that we move forward with, and rather than designating the rest as not approved, we table them for a discussion when Ms. George is back. We do not want to walk away from this meeting having ended this debate if some of these projects are not going to be approved. She has recommended that they all be re-approved, and so if the board's decision is we're going to approve all of them, then Ms. George does not need any additional discussion. However, if the decision from this board is going to be that some of them, we're not going to go forward right now, then we would like to reserve the, her ability to participate in that discussion. So those three options: approve them all, table them all, or approve some of them, and rather than designate the rest as not approved, we'll designate them as tabled for pending further discussion when Ms. George comes back. So we now leave it to your question-answer. It is our recommendation that all of them move forward, but we'll leave it up to the rest of the board members as to how we proceed.
Can I have a, ask a question on the roof at Bingham High?
Yes.
So this is not part of the summer projects. It's coming out of a different capital budget.
That is correct.
But, um, how mu, so partial roof replacement, how much of that, and will there be future phases of it coming?
Yes, this is a partial, and part, I think it was Phase 5, is the rest of the roof.
If I remember, this covers primarily the new classroom section-
Correct.
-that we just completely redid and... Just to damage that prematurely.
And what we would do this summer would not be wasted and have to be redone in Phase 5.
We would just be doing the rest of it in Phase 5.
That's correct, right, Scott? We don't anticipate...
Do we want?
Dave?
What?
As I understood it, if we do the roof right now, we won't necessarily-
This will actually be our last phase of the roof. We originally had it as part of Phase 5, but due to the deterioration that we've experienced the last year, that's why we recommended bringing it up to this year. The rest of the roof, we've done over, over the years, and so there wouldn't be any immediate other areas of the roof that would need to be addressed for, for several years.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions on specific projects?
So I do have a question, and I'm just wondering, Facilities Committee, how would you recommend that we pay for the overage? Where would you see the overage coming from?
We would prefer it be taken out of the South Jordan RDA money, which all along was money designated for a South Jordan school. The largest school in South Jordan is Bingham High School, and so we would recommend that it be, that come out of the South Jordan RDA money.
That's where I would feel more comfortable-
I shouldn't have spoken for all of us. We chatted about that, but we didn't make a full decision. That's my recommendation.
That's, my, myself, that's where I would feel more comfortable, seeing that such a large amount of the budget is going towards Bingham High School.
And remind me, it seems like when we went over last year, we also took some out of that South Jordan RDA money.
Yes.
How much was that last year?
$2 million?
I think it was $2.
Two-ish. The, the Finance Committee did talk about this overage yesterday, and talked about different options, and if, if we vote to go ahead with the full projects, that would have been our recommendation as well, is to take it from the South Jordan money.
What's the, what's the additional cost for Bingham? Like, what's that column, additional cost?
So we, we lumped the design fees as part of the additional costs. There's also carpeting that is not part of the contract that's included. There's some special testing that we have to hire outside entities to, to come in and perform for us. So any, any of those odd costs that, that come into play, storage containers, moving companies, all of those type of items.
You can't simply say, we'll approve the project and not the additional costs. Additional costs are part of the project.
They are part of the project, project, yes. So, there, there's a lot of furniture that, you know, has to be moved out of the way. We have to rent Conex boxes to put a lot of that equipment and furniture in, so that's where those additional costs come in. A lot of it's in the design fees as well.
And, and Dave, also in, within those, anything that might come up that we're not anticipating could be covered there.
Correct, yeah. We, we, we put a contingency in there for change orders, because we know once we start tearing into the building, there's going to be some unforeseen conditions that hopefully will be covered in that amount.
This is Phase 4 of Bingham. Originally, I thought we were going to do it in five phases. Is there five or six? Or seven or eight?
No, I think there'll be one additional that would take care of from the cafeteria east. It's quite a, a large area. We're just under 80,000 square feet, so it'd be probably the largest area that we would affect. But I don't see as near the cost in that, because a lot of that, that area is the gymnasium, which wouldn't require a, a lot of work, and some of the sports venue areas, the locker rooms and stuff like that, so.
We have one more phase, and it might not be this big. Because Bingham is killing our summer projects.
I, I would say one more, one more large phase.
Large phase, and then a little phase maybe. But one more, one more large phase, and we don't know if there's any other phase.
That should complete it.
And, and this is not cutting down the phase, right? On this phase, we're redoing all the offices, because I thought at one time, we talked about splitting the offices in the media center separately.
The whole thing.
This is the whole thing.
And there was an option.
And if you look at the options that I sent you, we can split that, but now it dramatically drops us well below our projected budget.
But it also-
We can't just shave off $500,000.
And, and I had asked that question of, is there any way we can shave just some, and there really isn't. It, you can shave a chunk, but, and that, that's a lot of money, and I worry about doing that, because construction costs just go up, and it will be even more to do it next year.
And Bingham High School is tired of the construction, to say the least.
So are we. But it's a good project, and we're saving a lot of money, and it's going to be-
Anyone wants to question what we've done, I'll take you on a drive out to Twillie.
I'd like to drive with you to Twillie anyway, so I don't even question. So I, I think the Finance Committee gave the bid too high. I would have, I was one that wanted it a little lower, and I'm also one that doesn't want to budge over the budget. I think we set a budget for a reason. This is over, but I do think the South Jordan RDA money allows me to say, we didn't go over budget. You know, we're going to take some money for, South Jordan has with us, and we're going to spend it on their school that's really draining our summer project, and so I would approve it as it is, you know, and I, and I think I could say, we didn't go over budget. We had the money in order to do it, so I would approve it.
Okay, so we have A, approve it all, B, table this, and C, approve all that we're confident with, but maybe take one or two things off. You're, you're comfortable with doing the whole thing tonight?
As long as we use the South Jordan RDA.
A.
A.
Okay.
I vote for A.
And I'm assuming Mr. Young, and I know Ms. George does too. Okay. Well, we will go ahead and approve these bids tonight.
You will see these bids on the agenda later tonight, and, and I, if you had asked questions about the specific bid, that, that's where they are.
And just so that I clarify, this is going to be the project that creates a very noticeable difference to the actual layout of the high school. Is that correct?
Yes.
This is going to be a pretty monumental shift.
This is where people will really notice.
Including the safety entrance, and I think that's very important to, to note.
Yep.
And are they going to be able to complete it in time?
Yes, they're very confident that they are.
And, and with a lot of this project being-
[laughing]
Administrative offices?
I said it with a straight face, Scott. I kept a straight face, but you broke the face.
I know there's a lot, there's a lot of factors.
Yeah, but the contingency plan with this is that they will focus on getting the student spaces done, and if they don't get it all done, it will be the administration area.
Administration will take the hit.
And they can have a Plan B. They can set up their offices in the gym or whatever. So it won't, it shouldn't affect student learning, because we're not doing as many student spaces, classroom spaces, as the past phases.
They'd probably love to tell a work, let all the students go to school, and they'll just work from home.
You're not doing the upstairs where half the student body goes every, at any given period.
But next year's could be that way, because that's real big common area, so.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you. Thank you, Facilities Committee, for your work on this, Finance Committee for the budget on this. I think we have a good process going for summer projects.
I agree.
And I'm on the wrong agenda. Okay, our next item is continued discussion on the fee schedule for the 2022-23 school year. We have been receiving a lot of feedback on this. We did have public comment. In our last meeting, we will have it again tonight. And then after the public comment, comment tonight, we will have continued discussion and a final vote. We do have to have voted on this by April 1 in order to meet the state requirements. Mr. Sorensen and Mr. Curtis, our administrators of schools over our high schools and middle schools, welcome. Do you have anything to present right off, or are we open to questions?
Oh, do you say something if you wanted? I, I'm gonna, if I can, Apple TV. I just wanted, you have the link to the website. Let's see, there we go. And I, I just wanted to bring to your attention, I know last time we spoke about two particular frequently asked questions. We've added to the website here that were addressed. One is why are participation fees increasing, the other is what can fundraise money cover? So we added those two questions in addition to continuing to have that link of FAQs that's provided by the State Board of Education regarding fees, and just tried to, to cover that information that was asked of that. So, so if you want to look at that, if you haven't, another, another component as you're going through is, you'll, you'll also notice at the top of each of our- you'll you'll also notice at the top of each of our levels, it's it's been in there, but it was kind of deeper in there, so we wanted to bring it to the top. And that is the identification that all fees listed are the maximum amounts charged per student for each class or school-sponsored or supported activity. Actual amount charged, maybe less. So in our, previously that was kind of hidden down at the bottom of this particular page. And so we've moved it to the top of each of those elementary, middle, and high school levels just to kind of make that more clear.
Mr. Sorenson, on the uh FAQ, why are the participation fees increasing? Officials are listed twice.
Oh, well, we'll.
I totally understand why, but.
They're going twice.
No, I appreciate that. Yeah, we'll get that out of there. Thank you for catching that.
So is that all you have? Mr. Sorenson?
So that's all I have, yes.
I am wondering if the board would be willing to consider a reduction in the high school registration fee of fifty dollars, so that we bring it down to fifty-five dollars and a reduction in the middle school fee from sixty-five to twenty-five dollars. I would like to be able to propose that um as as something that we do. As I've looked through the significant increases in our participation fees, I just, I'm more convinced than ever that I have no idea what it costs to run an athletic program. I have no idea what it costs to run an activity program and I have I I do have a recommendation in that area, but I I I don't feel like I am the person to determine what those fees should and shouldn't be. But I do recognize that it is a significant, significant increase and ask for a number of parents. And while a fifty-dollar reduction in the registration fee doesn't go anywhere near offsetting that for a parent who has to pay for um for participation in an athletic or an activity, it, I I think it's a good faith effort for us to be making at this time in the district. And so I'm just throwing that out and wondering if if there's interest in in reducing the registration fee that all high school and middle school students pay.
And did you say high school reduce it by fifty and middle school reduce it by how much?
Forty. So high school's fee would be fifty-five dollars and the middle school fee would be twenty-five dollars.
Right, how did you come up with those numbers?
So my 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 preference would be that the district just forego their piece of any of those registration fees. And so if you look at the district portion of those registration fees, the high school is fifty and the middle school is forty. So the schools themselves would be held harmless in this proposal. And the district would assume um the shortfall at the district level. Where does the district find that money? Because I would agree that we should lower the high school general fee if that's where they've been taking money to to support these programs. But it seems to me that we're okay with them raising those costs, but those are not going to stay at the school. Does that make sense? I think we, as a district, in the next couple of years are going to have to find this money one way or the other. And I think we're in a great opportunity right now as we're looking at our budget, as we're setting the budget to factor this shortfall in and and find it within within our budget and the other tools that we have at our disposal. I think it's going to become more and more cumbersome for districts to collect an overall fee and then to prove um that those fees are are being um allocated with exactness to the the letter of the law. And I think we're getting into a a time where that's going to be it it's going to create a very heavy um burden on on our district to prove that. And I would just assume um cut this off at the pass before we we have to run into that.
I would have to say I completely agree with you, Mr. Young. I do think that those fees are going to be going away. If we cut them down just by that amount now and then we look towards the future, it won't be it will be as big as of impact, but it would not be forced upon us in such a large way.
And just as a reminder, the legislature did consider uh cutting curricular fees this session and 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 nearly passed until they got to the end and didn't know where they were going to come up with an extra fifty-three million dollars. And so the bill stalled. Um, but by Mr. Young, by when you say find within our budget and tools at our disposal, by that you mean our ability to raise taxes to cover it?
Uh huh, all of the tools at our disposal.
And then one more question, when um, so the district would forego their registration fee, the schools would be held harmless. I think it's safe to say they wouldn't be held, not only would they be held harmless, they'd get a huge windfall because they're going to be charging a lot more for some activities. Is that a fair assumption?
I I I mean, the schools, I think, would beg to differ because they, as a school, are not getting it. The specific athletic or activity program is getting that those dollars. And so um, I I think the only way that the school is getting a significant windfall is in that they're no longer having to utilize their student body general or their gate receipts necessarily to to pay for the things like the transportation and not. I I'm not sure I would characterize it as a windfall. I I think each of the athletic programs is going to be, I I I just don't see it as a as a windfall, but I could also appreciate that to say they're being held harmless is is probably on the other side of that spectrum. I I think that's fair.
And I would support a a reduction in that in that part of the fee, but I really feel like the entire amount is too much. When I look at some of the things that are listed um that those funds go for, school postage, and I know we don't use postage quite as much anymore, but it's still very real, uh, school supplies, school technology, um, those things are necessary and they have to be covered somewhere. Credit card fees are very real. Um, school media and the library, still very real. Um, and so I think I think the full amount is is in my estimation too drastic.
I would agree. I think I struggle with shifting the burden in this situation to our general patrons, many of which who don't have kids in school. This is a user tax. Um, and right now the legislature has allow us to to charge a user tax. I think it's a fair tax. Um, I am very much in favor of if we're going to collect additional fees in the participation of these ath- uh activities and we've been drawing them from general funds in other places, I'm very much in favor of lowering them. But I'm not in favor of lowering them to a level that it hurts our taxpayers. And then we have to battle between, do we raise taxes to fund our employees? Or do we raise taxes to pay these fees? And I don't want those in competition with each other. And I would be very much in favor of maybe moving half of that this year. And if we find out that that budget can sustain a lower drop the next year, then I'm good for that, but that's a huge jump to cut these in half.
And I I li- I like the idea. It it makes sense to me to cut the registration fee. I would love to find a way to come out revenue neutral on this. You know, if we're raising a bunch of fees here, then we cut registration and and break even. It, this is challenging. I mean, that seems like it would be easy to do, but it it's not because we don't have district-wide data on this. Is that correct, Mr. Larson? It's every single activity at every single school would have to be done piece by piece, right?
You're talking about the district portion or the school activity pieces with the each individual activity?
I'm I'm talking about the whole, just the whole fee schedule. We're we're raising the participation fee for a whole bunch of activities.
Yeah.
And so if I knew, I mean, I, so I did. I kind of went through and added up how much we're raising the participation fee for several different activities, like the significant ones. I didn't do the minor ones. And estimated in my mind how many players at a school would be playing that or be paying the extra um fee. And I came up with, just for an average school, and I was just thinking Bingham because that's where my kids go, so I kind of know how many kids are on teams because I've been to all sorts of activities there. My very, very rough calculation was that the school would be collecting about seventy-five thousand dollars more um in just participation fees in extracurricular activities. Um, and if I divided that by twenty-five hundred students at the school, that comes out to about thirty dollars a student. So I would be comfortable, I mean, and my math might be completely off, but I would be comfortable with we could even be conservative and say cut registration fees by twenty-five dollars a student.
I'm, I could, I could do that. So let me just speak to the administrative headwinds that we're we're going into and why why I would propose that we just, we just get this over with and and get the district out of the fee collection business. I I'm not casting any aspersions on our state school board when I say this. A few years back, they they were publicly embarrassed, if you remember, about school fees. And and they are the ones who took it on the chin in the news and in this, in the state. And and they began putting in pretty draconian practices with regards to school fees, waivers. I I think they've established a whole department of individuals whose sole reason for for being at the state is to ensure that fees are being appropriately collected, appropriately assessed, appropriately collected, and appropriately spent. And and the mechanically, the way the district portion of fees are collected and distributed, other general funds, and and Mr. Larson, correct me if I'm misstating any of this, I don't, I'm not it becomes harder and harder to specifically identify, okay, this dollar was collected on a fee and this and it went to this program, this fee-appropriate program. To 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 continually connect that dot in our accounting system is is extremely, extremely difficult. And we are approaching a time where I feel like the s- the state and that group is going to be looking for opportunities to correct districts that that are, don't have that clean chain of 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 tracking. And so I I just, I, my preference, I know it's a, it's a haircut. I think it's a haircut we're going to have to take no matter what over time. I am not suggesting that we not fund these things that that are are using for the district examples. But that I I think we will look back and consider ourselves fortunate that we got out of this game when we did at the district level. But, Mr. Larson, I, i- if I misstated any of that, please correct me at this time.
I I think you stated it very well. Uh, the new, the new rules require you to track um a a fee and then track that fee through to the end to demonstrate that that student benefited from that fee. And the district portion of these fees is is very difficult to do that. To do that student by student when these are done in a um en masse type thing. I I am concerned about how some at the state would view these items. Another example might be that uh we are not to have things that are, have the definition of textbook. Well, the definition of textbook seems to change every time I hear it. And so is somebody going to call some of the supplies or technology or other things the equivalent of a textbook and therefore becomes an inappropriate fee? And so it's um, i- it will be very difficult on the district side to demonstrate compliance with the state's rules.
And so whether we reduce it by five dollars or forty-nine dollars, um, that that will be an issue. And so that's that's one of the reasons that I would recommend that we just we just do this now.
I would like to add that our closing Student Activities Fund budget in two thousand eighteen was seven point eight million dollars. And that's about the time we asked Mr. Sorenson to start looking at our surplus and cutting it down. And they came back the next year and said, we proposed some cuts. And we looked him in the eye because we were generally disappointed, saying, that's pretty conservative. And they were nervous. Understandably so. They were nervous about cutting fees. And so they said, we're going to start conservative and see how it goes. The following year in two thousand nineteen, the final budget in our activities fund, Student Activities, decreased by eight point five percent to seven point one seven eight million. The following year, that fund decreased by nine point one percent. So about ten percent a year. The following year, it increased seven percent.
Is that because of COVID?
That's because of COVID. So that's an anomaly we can't really account for. So I would guess dare say that had there not been a COVID, we were on a trajectory of coming down about ten percent, nine to ten percent a year, eight to ten percent a year. And um it still makes me a little uncomfortable that we are holding on to significant reserves in our Student Activities Funds. Now, I know there's carryover. I do not expect a zero line item budget at the end of a fiscal I do not expect a zero line item budget at the end of a fiscal year because I know there's carryovers. But those carryovers, I think, should be rare because we have adamantly insisted that this year's funds be sent on this year's students. So a carryover ought to be a rare item. And I don't think $7 million, $6.9 million at the end of a fiscal year, which corresponds to roughly the end of the school year. I just think we're holding on to too much. And so I understand the concern. I understand that we're being conservative. But when we're holding on to student funds that we charged a student and those funds are not spent, then I have to look the taxpayer in the eye and account for those unspent funds. Therefore, I am very much in favor of being a little bit more aggressive as we bring down these reserves, knowing the headwinds we're walking into. So I'm very comfortable with removing the district portion and moving forward with Mr. Young's proposal.
John, can you ask me a question, answer a question on that? Now, that includes student fees, but also there are some donations that are made that are also come into those accounts?
Yeah, the balance of the Student Activities Fund includes a lot more than just fees. It includes donations, tickets or gates that come in. It also includes travel, which, which I find, I guess, is a student fee as well.
So not all this money in that account is this year's kids paying for this year's fees? Where they're paying those, we have other funds coming into those accounts that could be pushing those fund balances.
Yeah.
But they're all at the discretion of.
At the discretion. I, I guess my problem, you probably never should have put me on the finance committee.
We did that deliberately.
Yeah, because we are amazing with what we're doing with our finances. But you can only tighten a belt so tight. In the economics, when I was an undergraduate, I studied the law of diminishing returns. And the law of diminishing returns says that there's a certain point that you start losing effectiveness. And I think this district is going to be beyond that very, very quickly. I studied the fees of other districts nearby. And I'll tell you, I had confidence in our administration, our principals and teachers and coaches before so. But I have so much more confidence in them now in looking at what other school districts in our, in our community are charging for fees. Because we're doing it right. It's our teachers and our coaches that are coming up with these numbers and our administrators who are working and improving them. It's not a board that's not right on site that's doing it. And my fear is two, two things. Number one, I don't want to make our teachers, administrators, and coaches have it so tight that they can't compete effectively with districts around us. And number two is I'm not interested in shifting a user fee to patrons that don't have kids in the school district. Because we think maybe the legislators might do that one day. If they do it that, then I'm good with switching it. But right now, they allow us to charge a fee. And I'm more than interested, you've heard me every year, talking about lowering that general fee. But I don't think we lower it to a level that we may have to raise it next year. If we lower it, we should never raise it again. And so I'm very uncomfortable, knowing the financial conditions of this district, to make bold, bold moves with student fees.
So you're comfortable lowering the registration fee?
Oh, for sure.
Where's your comfort level at?
Probably half of what Matt said, $25. I'm not sure about middle schools because we're not really bringing more money into them. That, I mean, we aren't raising any other fees, tough set that. But I mean, I think it would be fair to maybe lower that one too, maybe $10. And $25 at a high school, I think that would be very doable. I think it balances itself without putting us at risk. And it puts us in line with other districts with their general fees at maybe $10 to middle school and 25 for the high school. But it doesn't put us in a situation a year from now saying, should we raise the general fee again? In a year from now, let's look at the balances. And if we need to lower it again, I'm, I'm more than willing to lower it again. But I just don't want to be put in a position that we have to raise it.
Is that what Ms. Richards? Or are you comfortable lowering the registration fee?
Yes, but not to that extent.
And where's your comfort level at?
I'm fine with it. I was thinking 20.
Yeah, I was.
But I'll go 25, but I don't want to go the 50. I would go 10, but not anymore.
Lowering it to the 55 and the 25? Wait, so lowering it?
For high schools to 55?
Okay.
Young's proposal.
And the middle schools to? Okay.
And let me be clear, I'm not asking for any tightening of the belt. I don't want schools to spend less. I'm not asking them to cut their expenditures. I would like to see us pull from the reserves that we have.
We're losing our reserves.
Not these.
We're losing our reserves very quickly.
Not these.
So let me ask you some questions about the reserves. Because some schools have a lot of reserves and other schools not so many. So are you suggesting we equalize the reserves across all the schools?
I haven't.
When you're just giving us a total, a lot, a lot of that's in one school.
That's true. I would like to, I don't, can't answer that question right now. But I think there's a lot of cushion there.
This is significant enough, I think Ms. George should be involved in it. Can we approve it as it is and come back? Because we can always reduce the fee, we just can't increase the fee. Is that correct or is that not correct?
That is correct.
Yeah, that is correct. You just have to follow the process of adjusting what was approved and have two more open meetings for a change.
Have a public open meeting to reduce the fees.
Sounds like we're all in favor of reducing the fees, the question is how much? So, and we're tied, three and three. So.
You at?
I'm at reducing 25 and 10. I was actually at 5 for middle school, but I'll go 10.
I would have 5.
So please forgive me if I sound naive in this question, but I think it's important for us to kind of elaborate on the question that you were asking, Ms. Miller. Do you get a sense that if we were to cut registration fees, that it is going to impact one school more than it will another?
And I'm just, I'm just guessing from the conversation that you're having is that this will really not have an impact on the school itself. This will have more of an impact on the district because they will still get their allocations from the district to function as they always have. So.
That's with one of the proposals.
Sorry for, for, for the discussion of, of the reduction, if you were to take it from the district portion.
I'm, I'm a little on, along the lines of Mr. Sorenson. I, I'm a little confused as to the, the difference here because if we're reducing 25 as an example, then does the, the chart that's on the screen, does that mean 25 still goes to the district to then allocate back to the schools? Or does the full amount that is still there go back to the schools? Because it's coming to the district, it's not. So the, the 25-10 conversation, that's, I'm a little confused at what that was. I, I understand what Mr. Young was saying about the 50 and 40. But I'm not following the 25 and 10.
So my thought process on that is that it would be 25 less going to the high schools because that makes up for the $25 per student more that they're going to get from activity fees.
Okay, so it's on the other side of it.
But I would also, but I would also say let's, if we decide to go ahead and lower it by 25, possibly send back to either Mr. Larson or, I don't know who. Mr. Sorenson and Mr. Curtis, or maybe the finance committee or someone to bring back a recommendation. If that truly makes sense, because like I say, my calculations were rough and based on one school. That if that makes sense, that the 25 would just come out of the school or if you have a recommendation to distribute that differently, I would be welcome to hear that and, at a future meeting. Does that make sense?
So you'd prefer that the district remain whole and the schools take the hit?
Not necessarily. I just came up with my 25 and actually even 30 by saying the school is going to get $75,000 more. So let's reduce their students' registration fees so that the school is revenue neutral, they don't take a hit. And neither does the district.
Seeing when I was in agreeance with Mr. Young, it was because I feel that within the next couple of years, we're going to be told that we can't collect that. So I would rather see that be taken from the district in smaller amounts to get in preparation of, because I do think it'll happen sooner than later.
And I can see that, but they, they didn't do it because they wanted to hold the districts harmless.
And they wanted to fund it and they're not funding it. So why are we taking our taxpayers' money and increasing their taxes? Because in anticipation of what they might do, which normally what they might do never does happen.
The legislature made the decision to give a tax cut to people instead of, to a tax cut to everyone instead of a fee cut to the people with kids in schools. That was their decision that they made.
And what they'll make in the future, I don't know.
I just don't know, want to make any part of a truth in taxation hearing is we're, we're part of this is because we've lost fees. And that's what I'm afraid is going to happen, is that we'll lose fees to a way that we have to make it up to the taxpayers.
That's where I'm too. I, I just was trying to come out of a ways, how can we stay revenue neutral? I don't, I don't want to raise fees, I don't want to raise taxes, I want to come out revenue neutral.
And I do think that's an important clarifier. If registration fees were reduced, which portion is going to be reduced? Because ultimately, you are either saying that the school's going to have less to work with when it comes to all of the examples that you see listed under their activities for all students. Or you're going to see the, the district finding the funds and then the, the school themselves will be held harmless and be able to continue to provide to the level that they're currently, a lot of those student activities. So, so really which revenue direction it goes, I think is an important clarifier as to how the registration fee would be reduced. And I can guess how the principals would want, but.
Okay, so everyone agrees to reduce the registration fee? We are at odds at how much to reduce it and whether it comes from the school or the district portion? Can we vote tonight to reduce the registration fee? And then come back with more study on where it comes from and the potential for the reduction?
We have to vote tonight on something. We have to approve something that we turn in on April 1st.
As is if we can't agree.
Or can we lower it to half with discussion later to see if we can?
How would everyone vote tonight? I would vote no against the current fee schedule.
Is there any way to contact Ms. George?
It puts a lot of pressure on her to understand this conversation.
She has not heard the discussion.
I agree, but she probably had some pre ideas about it, I would think, but just an idea.
Are there enough votes to pass it as is tonight? Do you want to just move ahead and pass it as is?
No fee reduction?
Mm-hmm. Yes?
We can always lower it. It's not harmful to pass it as is.
You're a yes?
I, I would pass it as is.
Pass me by, let me think.
Would pass it as is with further discussion on the registration fees.
We're all in agreement of passing it as half, so I, I would be in favor of passing it as half and, and look at lowering it further at another time. Just seems to me it's easier to explain to the public that to tie the, raising participation fees in these sports to a lowering, you know. It'd be harder to tie if we don't do that, at least half of that tonight. But if we're at a stand pass, we are there.
And I do think a clarifier that these are maximum amounts that you're identifying, so could, could be charged less. So you're just saying you wouldn't go above 105 or 65? And then can reduce, can reduce that. I could even get clarification from the state to see if another two meetings of hearing is necessary for a reduction. For an increase, that certainly would be the case, but for reduction, that may not be the case. But I would get clarification on that.
It shouldn't be the case if we can always charge lower.
Correct. That's my thought, but I just don't want to assume I'm right.
What if? So just an idea along those lines, Mr. Sorenson, what if that same phrase were listed on that opening page?
Yeah, we could easily add that. It, it's just not on the, yeah, we could easily just put that on the homepage of this website and include that.
Then that gives the board a little flexibility that way.
For further discussion.
So what happens if we vote tonight and it's tied?
It doesn't pass, it has to have a majority to pass. So it fails if there's a tie. And then we have no, then we have no fee scheduled to submit to the state on April 1st.
So I guess I would go back to the comfort, or the, the question that Daryl's posing. There are some of us that want to go to the 55 and 25, but there are some that are comfortable with going half. If we're at least comfortable with going half, then should we not bring it down to the half? I could support that.
The only problem I have with that is I am not settled. I, I don't like the idea at all that the schools take less than what they're already getting. And so without that piece of the reduction being resolved, I, I can't feel good about a reduction.
I could only say half with knowing that the district is, that the schools are not being held harmless.
And I don't think that commitment is being made by others. And so that's the only reason. And I don't think that commitment is being made by others. And so that's the only reason why I can't come down at all right now is because I, I'm not interested in the schools', um, piece being, being reduced.
But I thought the twenty-five was a basically pretty close to the same amount of money as we're increasing the participation fees. So.
Not that I'm aware of, so I.
Basically just in figures.
I know she didn't. I, that's her calculations, but that's not, what I'm hearing is that I'm not interested in the school, the high schools discretionary funds being impacted. All of these participation fees are going to very specific accounts at these schools that the principals do not have discretion over.
So is it not true that that the principals were subsidizing these activities and now they can't?
Yeah.
Which is why the fees are going up.
But I don't know the level. Uh, the data that they provided does not show to what extent that was happening.
And that's a fair point.
And that's what I meant. You're assuming an even spread. You're assuming that the schools will take in exactly less than they were supplementing.
That's a very fair point. So what if we reduce the registration fee? And then pitch this back with the intent that our schools are held harmless? And then pitch this back to, um, Mr. Larson to figure out how much of that should come from the school arrow and how much of that should come from the district arrow?
It's a tall order.
It's also going to be a tall order to figure out where we're going to take it from if we reduce it all the way. Okay, are we ready to just see where it falls tonight?
And what's the ramification if we vote no tonight?
We have to, we have to submit it to the state on April first. It's a state deadline.
Something. We have to submit something, yes.
And I'm not willing to vote if we're not ready to vote. Just me.
So you're not okay with going back to approving it as is and having this further discussion about registration fees? Lowering them at least?
Probably not.
Want the district to take the whole hit of all of the registration fees?
Like I said, the participation fee is going up. I'm okay with bringing the registration fee down a little bit and I think that between the gate and other things that they'll be able to make up for it. But if we're unclear about all of this, then why should I vote yes?
So what would you turn in on April first?
Blank piece of paper.
Does it revert back to our existing, that are, to last year's fees?
I don't know that answer. I'd have to get clarification on that. I would just assume that, uh, you know, we, we would submit, yeah.
Having not approved a fee schedule, you may not be able to charge any fees. Um, that's one possible action.
The good news is, we actually are all very closely on the same page of at least reducing registration fees.
How much? I wish we had more time.
Plenty of time to ask our questions, I feel. We've had time in between meetings.
But there's new information that we received in the last two weeks that we haven't been able to talk about. We're making a, we have to, we're forced to vote tonight. Nice to begin this conversation a little bit earlier. There was a big jump in participation fees.
Let me go off topic for one minute, just to ask one question. I've had a few people reach out to me and ask about just equity between boys and girls? Sports and particularly participation fees?
Uh, actually not, sorry, not particularly participation fees, sorry, because those are equal. Um, but when it breaks down to each school and each program, that's up to the coach to figure out all the additional um, items that are added on there. Is that correct?
That is correct. At, at the board's request to do, thing to have ownership of their programs.
So as far as at the district level and what we've set, the participation fee is the same regardless of whether it's a boys' sport or a girls' sport.
That is correct. And that is a consistent thing that principals requested and would like as well. But I, again, I do think, you know, schools will have the kind of that responsibility of, of not overcharging and that they can charge up to or less than in all of that. And beginning next year, potentially would have to write some refunds if that's the case.
Okay. So here's, here's my next proposal, and hopefully this one won't be as as difficult. This goes to this idea of data and me not being in a position to understand or know what it costs to run these different programs. I, again, I don't love the dramatic increase that, that we're experiencing in these participation fees. I just don't have an answer. I, I don't have the data to contest whether this is, the, whether these are outrageous or not. And so what I would like to propose is that this board formally in our meeting requests that our Finance Committee develop a athletic slash activity, financial template report that at a certain date beyond the conclusion of a season, thirty days, forty-five days, whatever that is, that that standard template be submitted back to the Finance Committee for, for reporting back to the board comparisons and just year end, a, a year-end accounting of what the fees were, how they were spent, what kind of overage, what kind of underage we have, if that's the right word. Where those supplements, you know, where the different funds came from, something where we can standardize the data across the district and begin to get a better feeling for what these programs actually cost and what we're actually charging are. I'd like to propose that as, as something that we do to, to get on top of this in the long run. Is that something anybody else would be interested in?
Yes.
I'd love that. Uh, cause that's part of why we're having so many struggles knowing what to do with fees is because we don't have any standardized data to look at. Mr. Larson or Mr. Sorenson or Mr. Curtis, any thoughts on that?
I, I think getting a, a form, uh, the idea is we are going to be moving into a new area and, uh, having every activity, every, uh, group putting all of their revenues and all of their costs into one area and, uh, trying to summarize that. I can see the benefit of that. I, there will be a lot of work that would have to happen at the school level, I'm thinking for that to happen. We can try and develop something at the district level, but for the same reason, there's some challenges here that every school is just very unique.
But that's part of the problem. I mean, I really appreciate the data that we did get from the various high schools, but to try to compare that data was just it was, it was not, uh, and.
Standard.
Yeah, there was no standardization. And so I can't tell you why, really why one school is charging two or three hundred dollars more than another school for the exact same sport. And, and if we could come up with some type of standardization, if there's six or seven categories, I mean, and, and have there be a very clean record, I, I just think future boards will be in a much better position to, um, to make informed decisions. And, and ultimately feel good. I don't feel good about this decision. And, and I'd like our, I, I'd like future boards to have sufficient data to actually feel good about what, what they're being in.
Yeah. I like the idea. Ultimately, in my mind, if we can get such a format into our system that we can just run it from the system would be ideal. As we get to that place, it may have to be a standard template of some sort that we fill in.
Right.
That's my thought.
Yeah, my, my thoughts, my, my thoughts are along that same line that sometimes what schools are tried to retrieve is out of their control. And I'll, I'll just use a transportation bill as an example. Sometimes that the timing of getting those, so I think the window will also be critical as to when we can, whether it's forty-five days, whether it's sixty days, just to ensure that we're getting, you know, that information, um, that is, that is sometimes hard to retrieve in a timely manner, but I like the idea of a specific where everyone is looking at the exact same costs of certain items and then they just fill it in. But I, I do like the idea of it would have to be created and then we'd have to ask the schools to kind of provide and fill in that information.
I think that needs to happen no matter what, whether that we're directed by the board to do that, or whether that goes through Finance Committee, that's something we need to do. It's been very difficult looking backward and trying to account for things using rules that apply to us going forward. But getting a process in place so that we account as we go and we keep up rather than trying to catch up, I think we can provide some very good information going forward, not only to the board, but to parents. And I think it'll also be very good data for administrators and coaches and advisors to make better informed decisions about where those fees need to be, whether it's up or down. And where, where the cost is, where we can reduce that cost, where we see value, where we don't. So I see that as a tool we're going to need, uh, for a lot of different reasons. And I, and I just reemphasize that. I, I think a lot of people have worked really hard to get information for this and that the boards acknowledge that. But it's looking backwards, applying new rules to what we did in the past that makes that accounting difficult. But going forward, I'm eager to see that data as well because I think we can organize that in a meaningful way that can be useful to everyone.
This goes along the lines of there's new legislation that was passed that will require the district in each school to report certain spending that they, they have on certain programs and break it down to a per-student basis. That was House Bill four twenty, which is codified as fifty-three G six nine oh one.
I know the focus has been on the high school athletics and activities, but I think at the middle level, uh, simply reviewing the spend plan that was submitted for any fee that's collected at the end of the class or the activity and just ensuring that the amount that they projected was spent, just reviewing that spend plan, I think would be accomplishing the same thing.
With the courses, the classes, the in-school things, I, yeah, I'm not asking for the, this is more of the extracurricular activities and athletics that I'm, I'm more interested in. I think that spend plan is doing what it's supposed to be doing and really appreciate how that's been applied.
So President, I would make a motion. I would, since this is a very appropriate study session motion, I would make a motion that we direct Finance Committee to develop a tool to understand the exact spending of each activity within a reasonable time as soon as that activity is over. Second.
Okay, so the, the motion is to have direct finance committee to develop a tool to, um, I forgot my wording already.
Thank you.
To gather exact expenditures of each activity after the activity has concluded, a reasonable time period after the activity is concluded.
And you're talking our activities and our, our, um, athletes, all that together? Okay, and then determining what that reasonable time period is? Um, and then I would also add to that, that they have that developed by the start of this school year? So we can start going with it this school year?
Yeah, and that, that part of that mechanism is reporting back to the board. On a frequent basis.
I think it's a, it's a combined board and district tool.
So that can be a, a discussion Finance Committee can also have is how often it comes back to the board, whether it's
As a member of Finance Committee, as a member of Finance Committee, I feel a little bit apprehensive in creating a template of something that I don't have expertise in. This should be developed by the district and approved by the Finance Committee, not something created by the Finance Committee.
Execute it however you want to execute it.
However your committee wants to.
However you guys want to do it.
However your.
How the proposal was, so.
However, your committee wants to develop the tool. You can have other people involved in the development of the tool.
And we will.
And we should.
Absolutely need to utilize it.
But I would rather put this on a board committee than on the superintendent.
Okay, any more discussion, any more discussion to that motion? All right, all in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Yes. Anyone opposed? That passes unanimously. Mr. Larson?
Can I, in an effort to try to, to find something to move forward with, can I maybe propose or discuss something to, to get some thoughts going, I guess? What I heard the board talking about as they looked at both sides of this equation on the registration fees, that they talked about trying to, uh, some board members were talking about, uh, offsetting some of the, um, portions that were going to the schools to subsidize or keep those other activities going. Uh, others were talking about, um, not wanting to put, uh, not wanting additional revenue on the district side to cover the the lowering of the registration fee and therefore there's this, a bit of a diversion between the two methods. Would it work to lower the district's registration fee? And by a proportional amount lower the amount the district then gives to the school, but the school keeps its registration fee? So now the school has a lower amount, but the district has the lower registration fee. So the lower revenue, lower expense, school then has a lower piece, although the piece is coming, the piece that's lowered is from the district, not from the registration fee that the district gets. The piece that's lowered is from the district, not from the registration fee that the district gets.
And, and that was always my thought process was that it would be coming from that.
So let me make sure I understand. So there's, there's a registration fee, there's a part that goes to the school, the part that goes to the district. But some of the district also goes back to the school.
Yes.
So you're saying the part that goes to the school stays with the school. So we, we lower the registration fee. The part that goes to the school stays with the school, that doesn't get touched. What gets lowered is the part that goes to the district and then the district. Offsets how much they give to the school.
I, I'm merely trying.
And that's under the twenty-five-ten scenario.
Right, and I, I'm merely trying to pull bits of what the board has talked about in different areas together. As a different way of looking at it to see if that might be. A solution.
I, I like that, cuz. Cuz my. Desire is that the school is held harmless.
Here's, my, my, my effort is to. If we don't meet that April first deadline, I. That, that would be very. That would be very bad. So I'm, I'm trying to find something the board can approve and then chew on. Down the road so that, uh, things can progress tonight. I think not coming to an agreement tonight and risking not having fees for next year would be. A very poor route to go.
So Tracy, for me, the question mark that we can't answer is how much of the school's general fees have been offsetting? The activity fees. That's the question we can't guess.
Exactly right.
So your proposal is, well, let's bring it down twenty-five dollars, cuz that's what I'm guessing the, the offset is. If we're right on that, then the schools are gonna come out neutral. If we're wrong on that, we harm the schools. So there's no way for us to predict how to harm, hold the har, the schools harmless, not knowing how much of the general fee is offsetting the participation fees. And so until we know more clearly. How much we've been spent, and I don't even know that we can go back with future rules, but we don't know. How much of the general fee has been offsetting participation fees? So that's why I'm nervous not taking any more money from the school portion, because that's the big question mark. I think the district can control more of the fees that we send back to the schools. Than to risk the school saying, you know what, we haven't been offsetting that much. And therefore by taking in twenty-five dollars less, we really have a shortfall. I think the only safe route is to deduct the, is to reduce the registration fee by some set amount that comes out of the district portion. And then if we find a surplus in general fee. In gen, general funds next year. We could then rearrange that. But to me, the big question mark is how much have we been offsetting activity fees?
And that's exactly the problem. And so I like, I like this. I like this solution.
And so hearing what, what I just heard there, which. What you could do is lower the district's registration fee piece, but then don't, don't give further direction at that point. Cuz we can decide that piece later about how much goes.
Yes.
Is that what I?
That matches my intent. Of what I pictured in my mind.
That still leaves open that this board could decide. That the school's piece gets lowered at a later date. Is that right? Or would the motion be whatever the reduction is, that come out of the district portion?
Straight up. That would be, as I have stated it, whatever amount we reduce the registration fee would be specifically taken out of the district's portion. And that no reduction that goes to the high school would occur this year.
You can. Right, the, the one thing that. That I'm trying to. If you use the district's piece of it, everybody, what they had expressed earlier could happen. At a later date, however you guys want it, but.
So explain, I'm hearing later date and I'm hearing not this year. So I think I'm hearing two different things.
Either way.
Well, as far as what gets proposed and submit to the state, that's what I'm talking about. What get, actually gets charged to the public, that's different. I'm saying. What we submit to the state on April first is this year's budget. Or this year's fee schedule.
Which would be a reduction to the district's portion of the fee. Well, do we even submit that to the state or we just submit the fee schedule, what the fee is?
Submit the fee schedule.
They don't make us say what goes where. Do you like my arrows?
It would just be a registration fee amount that we would submit to the state, so. They don't.
Yeah, to that point, I suppose they could just do that and worry about this later.
Worry about where it comes from later.
I would very much like to reduce the registration fee by what's being offset. And now being charged in activity fees. That is a very huge goal of mine, but because we don't know those amounts. I'm nervous taking money away from the schools. So my proposal would be. That we approve a registration fee that is less than the current one. But takes that reduction out of the district portion. My, my proposal would be the fifty and forty. If other people want smaller numbers, then whatever the number is, it's taken out of the district portion. And I say that not for the world's sake or for the. Submitting, I just want to know, I want the district to know. That my position is that this is not gonna come out of the money that goes to the schools. I want the schools to hear that. I don't want any principal listening to this conversation to think I'm gonna have fewer general fees or general funds. This coming year because of what I heard the board say. I want that concern to be taken off the table.
And that was exactly my intent all along and. Apparently was not clear enough with that. But I was hoping that we could lower it and then. Figure out a way to hold the schools harmless. But I'm, I'm very comfortable with saying, let's take it. From the district portion. Cuz that's a clear way to send the message that the schools will be held harmless.
Go, can, can we do this the proper procedural way? I make, I'll start with the big one. I make a motion that we reduce the registration fee by fifty dollars for high school and forty dollars for middle school. And that reduction come out of the portion going to the district. That's my first motion.
You hear that right now?
Yep.
I'll second that.
Now I would ask you to call for a vote on that, and if that fails, we'll try again, but let's do this the way we're supposed to do it.
And then we're gonna repeat this whole process in the business meeting? Is that what you're?
Well, if we can, if we can come to an agreement here, theoretically, we would already, we would just go right to that agreement in the business meeting. If this motion fails, then we're gonna try another one.
Okay, so we've got to reduce by fifty and forty. Fifty high school, forty middle school comes out of the district portion.
Let me how that holds schools harmless. I mean, so we're gonna fund that, so we're gonna raise taxes to get the money. Cuz it's not gonna actually grow on John's money tree, cuz that hasn't been growing very well. Like, how does this hold schools? The money that goes to the district doesn't stay in the district, it comes back to the schools. So if we're gonna take the money.
But not for the way they've been spending it. It comes back in, in limited. But it comes back in limited budgets. They can't take it and put it in their general fee, their general fund. It comes back as credit card fees. It comes back as these specific things that the district pays for.
It is my belief we would have to raise taxes if we cut it that far.
I'm not ready for that.
It's a seven hundred and fifty thousand dollar cut. And it would have to come from somewhere, yes.
Okay, this is, this is just a, a practice vote for tonight. All in favor of that motion, say yes.
Yes.
All opposed?
No.
No.
And three no's, so that motion fails.
So then I would turn to someone else, since I made a motion that failed, I would turn to someone who said no on that and expect a different motion. So Daryl, Tracy, or Merrill, or Marilyn, let's hear your motion.
I like you more, Ma, Marilyn.
No, you go ahead, Daryl.
I make the motion that we reduce the fees by twenty-five dollars for the high school. And ten dollars for the middle school. Um, with the. With the intent to bring this back for further study at a later date.
May I add to that motion?
To come out of the district.
With, with the reduction coming out of the district portion of the fee and not the school portion of the fee.
Correct, I meant to say that. You just read my mind so well.
One more time, say it clearly.
I, I propose that we take and reduce the high school fee. Twenty-five dollars, that would be eighty dollars, right? And the middle school would go down ten dollars, which would take it to seventy-five dollars that would come out of the.
Fifty-five.
Fifty-five. I did not do well in math, I guess. And that would come out of the district portion. At this time with the intent to re-study this at a later date to look for further reductions without tax increase. Well, we can leave the last part out. Further reductions at another time.
I'll second.
Okay, anyone discussion to that? All in favor of that motion, say yes.
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 That motion would pass.
We go.
Mind in the next hour. Okay.
And then at that point, we could have that discussion if there's gonna be a truth in taxation to lower it more and offset it there, then we can have that. We can revisit that.
May I clarify something, President?
Yes.
Daryl, with that, that would mean that the, the high school piece that comes to the district would be twenty-five dollars and the middle school piece that comes to the district is thirty. Okay, thank you.
Okay, is anyone, uh, anyone have anything else on fees before we move on to our next agenda item?
I have one final thing. I am not comfortable with the fundraising and the way that's being communicated to our students and parents. I had a couple of communications where. Fundraising is already being communicated for next year. And. In one example. Students have to hit a minimum fundraising goal. Before they get. Any of those dollars to allocate towards their fees. And I just think that, that is not in the spirit. Of what we're looking to do here. I, I was under the impression that fundraising was init, what its. First. Goal is to provide our students with an opportunity to raise funds to pay for these fees. Is that not what the primary intent of fundraising is?
I think it depends on the coach and the program and what, uh, they say. So I, I get that that is a good priority that perhaps can be discussed. And prioritized. But historically, I would, I would say that, that has not always been the case of, uh, you know. A, as a coach or an advisor, you're gonna expect a, a parent. To cover the costs that are associated with the program and what we're gonna raise money for might help us get. Whatever we, we think we need, but I, I think with the adjustment, for example, we have, we haven't allowed parents to. Fundraise to cover participation fees in the past and now that's allowed. And so to create that priority might need to be a discussion. And a reemphasis that we have with our principals, uh, and have them reemphasize that with our coaches.
Or what was your understanding of fundraising?
That anything that you had went towards your fees. Anything that you would fundraise.
Students are not required to fundraise, therefore they shouldn't have a, some sort of minimum level they have to meet.
And is the minimum level being set by? The coach, the, or by the fundraising entity?
I have no idea, yeah. The, on this specific one, it's just you have to get to, you have to sell a certain amount and then at that point you get the discretion of where to. To apply any, to apply a certain percentage of it to your. Participation fees.
So it would be interesting to me to find out what happens with the certain amount that you have to meet.
Exactly.
Because we've got right in our policy, students must not be compelled to sell or purchase products or services and must be free to voluntarily participate without peer or group pressure. That's what our policy says.
But our policy doesn't say anything about the priority should go towards the participation fees. Is that? Is that fair to say?
That, yeah, it is not specific in there.
But I would like to see a situation where a team could come together and say, guys, we're gonna raise money for this new thing. And anyone who participates in the raising of, can participate in that thing, but as far as the participation in the sport in general, there ought to be other fundraisers where. If you, we're gonna make these opportunities available to you and if you wanna avail yourself of it, great. If not, that's fine. But there has to be some way for a coach to say, look, we'd really like to go on this additional trip. That's not required and we're gonna fundraise and if we get the money, we'll go and if we don't, we won't. Versus here's an opportunity for you to offset the participation fee, we're gonna make that available to you. I would like to see both systems in place. I would like to see a coach say. Here are ways you and your parents could raise money for the participation fee. And you're on your own to do it, or we could do it as a group. But in addition to that, I'd love to see a team come together and say, you know what, guys? If we all can raise a hundred bucks, we could buy this baseball cage, batting cage. And a team says, we wanna do that and they all participate and they raise the money for the batting cage. So I don't wanna say that all fundraising goes first to participation fees. But I also don't wanna say. Okay, all fundraising goes to the team activity. There needs to be a balance between. We're gonna provide an opportunity for you to offset these increased participation fees. But as a team, we'd also like to do this extra thing.
I, and I just want you to be aware, so the state actually, we are more strict than the state on our fundraising practices. So. What that means is that the state does allow for one required group fundraiser. Activity for each of our groups. We don't. Our district policy does not allow for any required fundraising to take place. So a lot of districts or programs or schools outside of ours will use that one group required fundraiser to do just what you described. To come up with some of these opportunities. But we, we can.
That is up and beyond the normal sport that we're playing.
Correct.
So I don't know how to direct that, but I would like to see both of those options available to a team.
I guess I would have hoped. That in a year where we were seeing such dramatic increases. Coaches and principals would have. Looked for the opportunity. To put that as a priority and help us as we're raising these fees to say, let's put that as a priority. We recognize. What it is we're doing is unprecedented, that these are significant increases, and so for this first year. We're gonna make that a priority. I'm disappointed that I have to ask for that as a board member and that that wasn't just the natural thoughts. That were going through our programs. I, I mean.
Is you referring to the groups that are doing fundraisers for the twenty-two, twenty-three school year already?
Yeah. That they're saying, we are increasing it, we know it's significant. It may not be what everybody else is, but we know this is a significant jump. We know a lot of you are gonna have to ask questions about participating, but we're creating a vehicle. Where when we do a fundraiser this year. That's gonna be, you're gonna have that opportunity to use those dollars to offset this. That would have been a good faith. Type of a move.
Um, do you think we need to bring the policy to a? uh bring the policy to a future agenda and consider changes to it?
I don't, I, I mean I wish they wouldn't, I, I wish we didn't have to compel in all things. So I don't know if it, I don't know.
Think about it, we can add it.
Barring a motion, we won't take action.
Right.
So anyone who wants to make an emotion on that.
If everyone wants to review the fundraising policy and bring it agenda, we can let us know.
I got a statement to make. If you are not a regular visitor here over the last five years or more, you'd probably think, oh, Jordan District's a wreck with school fees. I don't know, you might even run a story on the news, you know? But if you were to look at the last five years of what this district has done with school fees and what it's caused the state to do and what it's caused other districts to do and, and how we have developed trust with our coaches and our administrators, this is one of the things that we shine in. And so if you're just popping into this conversation without that back history of what we've done over the last five years, it's been a great board working hard at this, it's been a district working side by side and our coaches. You ought to be proud of this district with school fees. And all you gotta do is look at the school fees of others and say, you know what, Jordan District, they're not perfect, but they're amazing. And that's just what I wanted to say.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, I, this has been great discussion. I really appreciate everyone's um input. These are, these are difficult issues. Um, but I agree with Daryl, we've worked really hard on this over several years and we're making really great progress. And I, I think even over the next year, we'll make even more good progress. All right, we do we have any agenda items that will only take ten minutes?
Unfunded routes could.
Starting end times will take very little time.
Okay, can we jump ahead to start and end times, agenda item G? Is everyone okay with that? Do I need a motion to jump ahead in the schedule? I don't think I do. Okay. All right, Dr. Godfrey.
This is more of a progress update than a review today. This is tied in with Friday schedules and we, I will be bringing that back next week. Recommend, or next meeting, rather. Uh, the recommended Friday schedule as requested by the board and then starting end times will be coupled with that. I'll also call individual board members about the implications for schools in your area of various options that we're considering because we're looking at different ways of addressing busing to see how efficient the routes are very efficient, but see where we can provide some consistency where we can reduce busing if necessary and, and uh put some other just try to rework a few things, so um I'll make sure that you are well-prepared for that discussion in the intervening weeks. And we'll bring those together as items that um complement each other on the next agenda.
Not to lengthen this agenda item, but can I ask a question?
Sure.
You may not be able to answer.
Okay.
Salt Lake City City School District started high school later this year, is that correct? At least that was the proposal, it was all over the news.
I don't know if that was finalized, but I know they were talking about that.
Do you know if they did or didn't?
I don't. But I'll, I can find out in the meantime what's happening.
I would love to know if they did, and if they did, did it have the effect that they all thought it might? Cuz we hear that every single year about high school start times are too early and can we start them late? And I would love to know if a district did do it and what the result was. Are they saying, oh, my goodness, this was the greatest thing we ever did? Or we tried it, it caused all sorts of problems and it didn't get the results we wanted? Or we didn't even try it because it was too complicated? I'm very curious to know if anyone has had success at that.
I know Park City was talking about it at one point in time too, I don't know if they ever changed.
I have a superintendent meeting at the state level between now and then.
With certain superintendents.
And I can uh there's a lot of exchange that happens there, so I can, I can find out what's happening.
Either we need to be told this was phenomenal and we need to do everything we can to, this made a major impact in our schools and we should do what we can to consider it, or for all the hype, it really didn't make a difference.
And I'll be prepared to talk about options that I think we do have available to us in addition to what some other districts have done and how they've reacted to that. Thank you for that question.
Can I just make a statement about that? Suzanne Harrison passed a bill about that several years ago, trying to get districts to do that. Um, if we look at the charter schools, many charter schools tried it and they bounced back and went back to original start times. We announced before COVID that we were gonna do a blended option first period. Is that still a reality or has that been postponed and indefinite where first period students could choose to come first or blend or I know COVID kinda redefined everything, but we did make that announcement.
Yeah, our press conference was a couple of weeks before COVID hit.
Apparently.
With King's Peak, we have additional options. But we also have teachers that are prepared to do blended learning at their school. But um I think that is a very viable option that we can make more clear to parents and students where it's not the same as being provided transportation for everyone at a later start time. But it means that if you take two classes in a blended or virtual format, you can come to school every day at nine fifteen at the high school level. Which and still be out at two thirty. But, but attend those classes and, and get that information um on your schedule. And we have a well-established program for that, but it's also useful to have that available at the high school. Uh, because then you're in the same building with the teacher that is teaching you that blended learning class, so that is available still, but we, we have stepped away from emphasizing that like we started to. And I anticipate that in January, that will be a point of emphasis again for, for students. We have a clear path for you to, to do that. For registration for the following year.
Cuz I think most people are very interested in a later start time, but they're not so interested in a later out time.
Right.
They don't understand the ramifications of high school and middle school and that what they're proposing would cause elementary kids to be walking in the dark in, in winter, or
We had this debate on my social media and it says, why don't we bounce every school back an hour? Well, that means elementary starts at ten o'clock and gets out at five o'clock and they were not too happy about that.
Right.
Let's just buy more buses or something like that, which okay, but that costs money, so anyways.
Even if we had them, there'd be no drivers.
Drivers, but anyway, so I just, I mean, I love the options of one size not fitting all maybe and, and we were on a great path until COVID took us off of it, but.
And we do need to, I, I think, publicize that option again. I think people have forgotten about it.
Yeah, and, but, but you describe it well, it's a later start, but not a later end.
Yeah.
That allows for some flexibility and with, with King's Peak expanding, there's an expansion of options available. So there are some available at the local school, some available through King's Peak, all through the district. And so there's
So whether or not we announce anything or emphasize anything, it's already available.
Anyone listening wishing for that can talk with their counselor and now that we have a year of one full round of registration and classes at, at King's Peak under our belt, I think we have a lot of options available for families who'd like to consider a nine fifteen start for their high schooler.
Awesome, thank you.
My students would think a nine fifteen start was just absolutely horrible. That's way too early. Way too.
My student would love it.
None of my students would wake up at nine o'clock for a class.
Yeah.
Okay, so more on this at our next meeting. Thank you. We will now take a break and we will start our business meeting at six thirty.